Give him a break in ten seconds. Okay, good evening, everyone. We are now going to call the Subcommittee on Conference. The following matter will be discussed. To discuss the Home Rule petition regarding establishing a program allowing any owner-occupant of a condominium unit, single-family, two-family, three-family, four-family home to receive a reduction... It was the very first thing I said, sir, so, hold on. ...to receive a reduction on the water and sewer bill for the entire premises equal to twenty percent of the entire bill. A copy of the Home Rule petition can be found at the Chelsea City Council Office, 500 Broadway, Room 306, or you can email fmalera@chelsema.gov. Officials invited to attend: all honorable members of the City Council, the City Manager, Tom Ambrosino, and members of the public. At this time, I'll ask the City Clerk to read the roll.
Counselor Recupero?
Yeah.
Counselor Tenere Garcia, absent Counselor Robinson, absent Counselor Taylor, absent Counselor Lopez, absent Counselor Vega Maldonado, absent Counselor Abisenada-
President.
Counselor Brown, absent Counselor Vido, absent Counselor DeJesus, absent, and Counselor Judy Garcia, absent. You don't have a quorum, Mr. Chairman, I have three members.
Okay, seeing that we do not have a forum, but, I mean, rather, a quorum, but we'll still go forward as an unofficial meeting. This is being recorded, and I'll allow the maker of the Home Rule petition to open up, make his opening statement. We'll allow the City Manager to reply and make his statement, and then we'll see if any of the colleagues, myself, or Counselor Ennio Lopez, have any questions, and then we'll wrap this up. So, Counselor Recupero, you have the floor. Please make your opening statement on your Home Rule petition.
Good evening, President, and good evening, City Manager, and good evening, my fellow Counselor, and Mr. Casino. Today, we're here for a very important thing. It doesn't matter what us counselors decide, because it doesn't really matter. We can only bring this forth to ask the state to act upon this, because if we've... The only thing we can do is send it to them and let them make a decision. So it doesn't really matter what we want to do. It's what the state decides it wants to do. The only thing we're doing is sending it forth for the state to decide whether to allow it or not allow it, to let us decide ourselves if we want it. So, here's my... Let's say, let's see, what's an easy way to put it? Here's my way of thinking. I don't know if it's your way of thinking, but I'm a homeowner. I know that you say, you can say, "Oh, well, why should everybody else make up the difference?" Well, when you really think about it, the whole difference is, if you own a condo, a single-family, your savings is between ten dollars or less a month. If you own a three-family, up to a two, three, and four, your saving is thirty dollars. It'll come to about three hundred and some odd dollars a year. The total amount to give everybody in this city a break, it'll cost one point four million dollars. We rake in, I think, twenty-eight million dollars a year from water charges. Twenty-eight million dollars we take in a year from the water that we charge the constituents of our city. So, if we're giving someone that lives here a ten dollars off a month, or a hundred and forty dollars a year for a single-family and three-hundred, we're not really doing a lot. We're trying to, even though some people might say that you're gonna shift it onto the next person. We do that with everything in this city. We shift everything over to somebody else. How do you think this city survives? Does it just take everything from one? It goes all over the place. We shift everything. Everything is shifted. So, you're saying, "Why should you punish the people that don't own homes?" You're not punishing them. They're just gonna make up maybe one percent difference. That's nothing. That's actually nothing to give somebody. Besides, they always say, "Well, the stakeholders are important." Well, who's the biggest stakeholders in our city? When you really think about it, the biggest stakeholder is the person that owns a home here, that lives here, and puts all his money in this city. So why shouldn't they get something in return? And that's not just one, that's everybody that lives here, everybody that owns anything, a condo, maybe not businesses, businesses, but by law, everything's... We can't decide who gets the money. We can't even give it to them, because we cannot. That's why we're doing a Home Rule petition. The only thing this does is sends it to the state legislators, and they determine if it's gonna happen. And I'm very much doubtful that they will let it happen, because it's the first time ever being done something like this. What it is, is it's always hard, the first time, but someone has to try to do it. You know, I'm... It's not... I'm trying to do it for myself, because I'm a homeowner, and every other homeowner, and even... That's the thing. I'm trying to... We're not getting... When you really think about it, what are you getting? As a single-family homeowner, you're getting ten dollars a month. You can't even buy two gallons of gasoline for that. You know, what are you really getting? The point is gonna be, like, it's gonna be said, "Well, why should somebody else pay for it?" I know I just said that. But if that's the case, why should homeowners pay for everybody else and everything else? The homeowners are the biggest... They get taxed the most out of everybody here. The city taxes them more than anything else. Okay, maybe except businesses, but what is the percentages of businesses in this little city? And what is the percentage of homeowners that are here? There's more homeowners than there is businesses. So the bulk of your taxation, the bulk of your money, comes from the taxpayers that are here. I believe that through the years that I've been here, I lived in this city for forty years, water used to be a commodity that wasn't worth nothing. Well, more or less, they didn't charge you. Now, your water bill is a mortgage bill. It's a mortgage. It's the same as your tax. An average three-family pays between three hundred to six hundred dollars a month for water that the city gets. And in return, you try to give them thirty dollars. So they're paying between three hundred and six hundred, and you're giving them back thirty dollars. So, what are you giving them? One hundredth of a tenth of their own money back? What are you giving them? You're not really giving them anything. And then you say, "Well..." What you're doing is you're trying... What I'm trying to do is try to tell the people of this city that the city cares for you. It does care, even though we can't give you a whole bunch, but we can try to give you something, something to make you understand that we, me, as a city counselor, thinks of that. And I hope many of my fellow city counselors think the same way, that it's, you know, killing people. You know, say, "Okay, you're charging someone else." But that's okay. We shift, every day we shift. We shift when we do the maximum shift for the taxations. We shift all the time. The money gets juggled all around. So I could understand if you were spending hundreds of millions of dollars, but when you're giving a poor homeowner ten dollars, ten dollars, a single-family home a month, what are you giving him? What you're giving him is the gesture to make him understand that we, the elected officials and the city cares, is trying to do something, trying to give you something, a little bit of something. I don't know how it's gonna end up. I know one thing, that we cannot make this decision. This decision is done-
Counselor, you're repeating yourself, so please wrap it up.
I understand, but I want to make sure that I bring that home to the people, that they understand. I know I'm retelling and going back to the same thing, but I want to, because I want them to understand that we cannot make this decision. The only decision we can make is to send it to the state, and the state decides. Thank you.
At this time, I'll ask the City Manager if he's had any time to look at this Home Rule petition, and his thoughts of what the process would look like, what the administration of this would look like if it should, and also, the, I guess, the likelihood of something like this passing at the state level, even before it gets passed by, I guess, a local city council? And if there's anyone or anyone, any community around us that does any sort of discount for water rates for homeowner occupants?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, let me say, I'll answer all those questions, but let me say first, I'm agnostic on this, because it's revenue-neutral for the city. Whether you pass this or not, the city's still gonna collect the same amount of water and sewer revenue to run our system. What this would do is exactly what would happen in the tax situation, where you're simply shifting the burden from owner occupants in the city to non-owner occupants. They would pay a higher water and sewer bill than they otherwise would pay in the absence of this. So it's just a shifting of the burden. It doesn't result in the city collecting any total less money, and so, for that reason, I am not opposed to it, nor am I advocating for it. I would look at this as a pure policy decision for the City Council to make. You asked me if I looked at it. I did do ran some numbers, just to see how much it would sort of save or cost. The average annual bill for this year is a little over eighteen hundred dollars. Now, this is a family of four using a hundred and twenty, hundred cubic feet, which is what the MWRA claims an average family of four uses. So an average family of four unit pays, under our current rate structure, eighteen hundred and thirty-six dollars a year. So this would save each owner, per unit, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars per unit. And if every-
Annually.
Annually, yes. Based on this year's bill. Obviously, that would go up as rates rise, and they always are gonna rise. If every owner-occupant who currently receives a residential exemption were to take advantage of this, as Counselor Recupero said, we think the total savings or cost of this would be about one point four million dollars. Now, there is some assumption built into that, and that is, that assumes only half the condominium owner-occupants would be able to take advantage of this, because we could only give a condo owner a break if they were paying a separate water and sewer bill. There's no way for us to give, to make this work for a high, you know, large condominium unit where there's one water bill for the whole entity. So, the final thing you asked, so, all that would mean is that one point four million would get shifted to non-owner occupants. The rate that we set for everyone, so this would work just like the tax rate does in the residential exemption world, our tax rate, as published, is higher than it otherwise would be without the residential exemption, but with that tax rate and the residential exemption, the people who get the residential exemption pay a lower bottom line than they would if we had a tax rate that was without the residential exemption. Same would be true here. We would publish a water and sewer rate that's sort of higher than it would need to be, but when, with the twenty percent discount, the people who are owner-occupants would end up paying a total annual bill that's less than they would've paid had the rate been set without this. That's how it would work. Your final question to me was, what do I think the prospects are at the legislative level? I think, honestly, they are slim. No one else is doing this. This would be kind of a very unique program. My sense is that when the legislature sent this to the Department of Revenue to take a look at, they would not look kindly on this. It's just not something they typically would do, and it is so unique that, you know, these kinds of unique programs are difficult to get past the Department of Revenue. So, I don't think it has a high prospect of success, but I, you know, that's just my guess at it. The only discount that is out there in this water and sewer world is the senior discount, which we have, as do many other communities. Quite frankly, the legality of the senior discount is somewhat suspect. There's nothing in the statutes that actually allows it, but lots of communities do it. DOR's never really pressed anyone. No one's challenged it, so lots of, lots of folks do it, including us. Beyond that senior discount, there's no other kind of discount out there. This would be a one-of-a-kind thing for the city of Chelsea if the legislature were to pass it.
Counselor Lopez, do you have any questions? No. Counselor Recupero, do you have any questions?
Mr. Ambrosino, my question is a simple one. You just stated it's very hard for us to do. That's, even if we send it to the legislature, it probably won't pass. But, why shouldn't the city of Chelsea at least make an effort to send it? To show the people that you, the manager, us, the elected officials, do care in some way? And we shift everything all the time. But, like you said, the odds are ninety-nine point one percent that they won't pass. So, why am I trying it? Because maybe it doesn't pass, but maybe one day it will. Maybe one day, the people can say, "Okay, the cities and towns, they don't wanna kill us all the time. At least they're trying." That's the whole thing. The savings is not a whole bunch if you give everybody something. It's not... What does average out for a single-family home a month? Ten dollars?
No, about thirty dollars.
Thirty dollars a month, right? For a single-family home? And that's going according to the numbers that you say the MWRA says. I own a three-family home. My average bill is four hundred dollars a month, and I only use, oh, let's see, what did I use last month? Twelve hundred. One thousand, two hundred, and it came out to three hundred and fifty-three dollars. So, that's all I used, was, even if I used fifteen hundred, it still comes over three hundred dollars a month to each indivi... Each, you know, three-family homeowners.
Yeah, three-family, yeah, that would be more than three hundred a month.
Yeah, it'll be the average three-family pays about between three fifty to six hundred dollars. Depends how much water they use. So if you were to give a three-family fifty dollars a month, and you're bringing in six hundred, so, I know what you said, "We'll just shift it to the next person." For my figures, from what I understand, even if you shift it, the next person will only pay one percent, or half a percent. Total amount that we're gonna do it is one point four million dollars. That's a total amount of everybody that's entitled to it. That's what they will get. Oh, it will cost the city one point four million dollars if you give every homeowner, like you said, a break.
Again, it's revenue-neutral. It's not gonna cost the city anything, because you're just asking, as is stated, all you're doing is asking the non-owner-occupied accounts to pay extra. So it's not this, where, no one's getting a break or anything. You're given a break, but the city is independent of this and is just, again, charging.
But isn't that what you're asking? The non-owner-occupied, they don't get residential exemption? Isn't you doing the same thing to them? If you have a non-owner-occupied, and they get a residential exemption, who picks up the difference? Who picks up the difference?
So, that's, if you're open a debate, but I'm not going to go back and forth. I'll just allow you to make your statement. You ask the question, and as far as the likelihood of passage of this, I won't let the City Manager answer this, because it's not his decision. It's the City Council. He stated that it's a city decision. He just made his opinion based on past experience of matters like this going in there. He declared it, but as he stated earlier, he has no opinion. He's agnostic, meaning doesn't have an opinion in favor or against this, but gave you his opinion of the likelihood of passing. He does not have to weigh in on whether or not we should do this. That is, that decision is, or the opinion should only matter of the City Council. So, they're not here. If you wanna talk to them, that's fine. But if you have any other question, direct question about it, the administration of this to the City Manager, feel free.
But even still, Mr. President, the decision of the City Council is only one decision, to send it. We can't make a decision. We can't say we're gonna do it, yes or no.
I will argue that anything that we send to the legislature is a statement of not saying to them, "Please, please pass this." You're asking them that it has wide support from this community, wide support from its council, and if it does have it. So, it's not to, let's not mistake that. What we send to the state legislature is asking them to approve something that is vehemently supported, so, and not that it's decided upon them. You're basically asking them simply for a rubber stamp. That's it.
No, no, no.
That's all that happens. You're asking them to have a rubber stamp, because we don't have the authority to do it.
No.
We have to ask them to have the authority to do so, and they don't opine too much whether or not a community does this unless it has vehemently support. So when you pass something up there, such as a charter review, any amendments, and any Home Rule petitions, they're going with the idea, because they're not the, they're not present, that there's wide support of this. So, it's not really there. It's, it is a city decision, whether or not, or City Council decision, whether or not this gets passed, not the state legislature. Yes, we need state legislature approval, but it is this City Council that will decide whether or not we want this in place.
Yes, I understand. I understand what you're saying. It is the final say of the City Council, but if the legislature does not approve it, we don't matter. It has to go. That's what I want the people to understand, is we are sending it to them.
Right, but do not, but do not discount, do not discount, and do not try to say it's not important what the City Council does, because, hey, we need the state legislature to pass it anyway.
No, 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 no.
It is important. What we say is important. What we decide is important.
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is a simple one. We decide if we wish the state legislators to do such a thing. So if we decide to say, we telling them, "We want you to take a look at it," but the final outcome is not ours, it's theirs. We only telling them, "Look at what we're proposing to you." It has to be all of us to send it to them. That's what a Home Rule petition works. But, at the final outcome, it's theirs. They have to say to us, "Okay, we approve..."
True, but, but, no, no. True, but you have, in your argument, to make this get approved by this, by this council, you state, "Let's just pass it, because, hey, it's gonna be passed by the..."
No, 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 no. That's, that's not my argument.
But that's what you state.
You're changing what I, what my whole point is.
I hear you clearly. I hear you clearly. You've said it that way.
No, that's not my point.
Okay, well.
My point is a simple one. Why not give the biggest stakeholders of our city a break? That's the whole point I'm trying to make. That's it. I'm not saying that we're not important. What I'm trying to say is a simple one. I know we're going back to the same thing. We decide to send it to the State House.
Okay, that's decided upon, so let's move on.
All right. So, the whole point is, you're saying, I'm saying, "Oh, pass the rubber stamp and let them decide." That's not the whole purpose of it. The purpose of it is-
So, let's go on. We've, we've covered that ground.
Okay.
Your opinion is, we need to give the homeowners a break here. You've made that clear. Okay, so, let's, anything else?
Yes.
What else?
So, if we're gonna shift the burden onto somebody else, right? Like, you saying that we're gonna shift it, right? Now, but, now answer a question for me. Don't we shift things all the time?
That has already been answered, and the question, the answer to that is, yes, there are other examples of shifting of taxes.
And, and the point is, it won't even, all right, I understand your point. I don't disagree with what your, your point is that somebody else would have to pay the difference. I agree in a, in a sense that way. But, in another sense, the people that live here always pay. That's my argument. My final argument is, I don't disagree with what you're saying, that the burden has to be shifted to somebody else. But, in return, the people that are here shouldn't be all the time, never get nothing in return. They should get something too.
Well, I will argue with you on this. As someone who also has advocated for the, as I agree with you, the most important home stakeholder, the home, or the stakeholders in the community are the homeowners. I don't want you to forget and take notice that we're one of the very few communities that don't charge a trash fee. In this, and homeowners do not pay a trash fee. We subsidize that, okay? Many communities charge a trash fee for owner, for owners. This community has always picked up the tab. That, they get that. Do not, and don't shake your head, but acknowledge that that gets picked up, okay? That's a service that many communities do charge. That's a service that many communities do charge. So recognize that Chelsea is one of the very few communities, or not one of the very few, but is one of the communities that does not charge owner-occupants a trash fee. Recognize that. That's all I'm saying. Recognize that, that if you lived in another community, you may end up getting a trash fee. Recognize that difference, okay? Also, recognize that, yes, we, and I, increased the tax exemption to the maximum limit allowed by the state, maximum, to make sure that the homeowners pay the minimal amount of tax. Recognize that. Recognize also, okay, and I know you don't like to hear it, and I'll repeat it for the people at home who didn't hear this earlier. The taxes, and my, you know, and I've had conversations with the City Manager, I look at large buildings, such as One North, the Chelsea Clark Buildings and such. They are businesses. They are residential, but they're businesses. They're not owner-occupied, and they're treated, and the people who built them made, did so to make money as an investment. Large apartment money, buildings are of an investment and make money. Unfortunately, we as a city cannot treat them in our tax code as a business. We can't charge them the same rate that we charge the Moolers, or KM, or any of the warehouse. Our tax rate is split. It's twenty-eight dollars for, on, if you look at assessments for when you, on a value for a tax, a commercial building, it's only twelve dollars or thirteen dollars for residential. So those large apartment buildings, because they're in the category residential, only paying, they're paying the lower rate. And, the City Manager, I agree, I wish there was a way for these buildings that are actually businesses to be charged like a business. So what do we do to rectify? The best thing that we can do is, A, we give the maximum shift of our tax rate from residential to commercial, and that's why there's that large difference of one point seven-five percent, and we give a residential exemption. There's the argument of why we do it, because if you're acting like a business, that's number one. Number two, I will stay here on the ground and say that, unlike taxes, the use of water and the sewer is, in my opinion, a utility, the same as the gas, same as electricity. I can't dictate how much water a building uses or a homeowner uses. I can't. I say, "They pay what they use." I have no way of knowing that you're asking this City Council to subsidize a homeowner's water bill, yet I don't know, does he ha... Has he, is, does he try to save water? Does he have, or does that home have the toilets with the option one and two to make sure they're not overusing water? Do they have showerheads that don't spray as much water? Are they doing the best they can to lower the rates so that they're not, you know, the other people aren't paying for their high water use? We don't have no guarantee of that. So I say, "You know what? It's unfair in that way of, you pay for what you use." Now, if you want to work at the budget and try to figure a way of cutting the budget or what the rates are in this community and see if we can't do a better job of that, I will support that. That's a way of doing it. But to make people get sub, or pay for someone else's use of water and sewer, when it's a utility, not a tax, I say, "I can't be on board. I think it's unfair." And when this council previously tried to pass something similar, it was deemed illegal, even though it passed, it never got into the books, it never got, never got put into place because it was deemed illegal. And I was one of only two counselors who said that day, "This is wrong, this is illegal, you can't do it," and we were outvoted. But thankfully, the law said, "Hey, you know what? It was illegal." And I think we're on the same grounds again. So, if you want to try to pass it, convince your colleagues, great, but that's what we'll be.
Let me rebuttal what you said.
You go ahead, sir.
There we go.
And we'll close with this.
All right, here we go.
This is your last, this is your last right here.
All right, wait a minute now. You said, "We give people a tar..." We're the only community that don't pay trash, but you forgot to say-
No, no, I didn't say only. I said, I did not say only, again. I said-
We don't charge people for trash.
We are one of, we are one of the communities that doesn't, that doesn't charge for trash. There are communities that charge for trash.
All right, okay. So, we are a community of firsts. We are a community that we don't charge people to take, that let it pipes. We don't charge the people who have problems, it doesn't matter if you're homeowner occupied or whatever, whoever has problems, we don't charge them. We are a community of firsts. As far as Mr. President said, I tried to do this once and it was illegal. It was illegal because we couldn't pass it. Because even if we passed it, like he says, it has to go to the state house. And as far as making the shift to other people, like I said earlier, we do that all the time. But here's something else. We, as a community, as city councilors, have an obligation to the biggest stakeholders. We have an obligation at least to try, to try. It doesn't say that it's gonna be, but at least to try to, for the people to understand. Here, if you charge your landlord more money, who's gonna pick up the difference? You, the tenant. So, if you try to save your landlord $10, he's not gonna charge the tenant that much. So, in other words, who benefits? It's not just the homeowners. It's the tenants that benefit the same way. Because from what I understand now, when you rent an apartment, even in any building, he, any building in this city, they charge you for water. It's incorporated inside your amount. Because people have come up to me and told me that their rent is incorporated, they pay an additional $100 to $200 each month to put their water. So, in another words, that it's being passed automatic to each tenant. Each tenant is being passed that cost, no matter what it is. So, in another words, you're not shifting anything. You're making somebody else. The people that own these buildings, the developers that own these buildings, are still charging the tenants to pay for the water. Because the water ain't free. So, if you give a homeowner that lives in his own house, and let's say he rents a $10, even $30 a month, he's not gonna raise your tenant $30 a month. He doesn't have to. So, in another words, it's beneficial to, not only the homeowners, but to the tenants. Those are the ones that will get the benefits. It's the tenants. Maybe the big developers won't. They, but it doesn't matter to them because they're gonna pay anyways. They're gonna give it to the tenants. They do that now. I know plenty of buildings that are incorporating their water rates inside the rent. And I, for somebody to come up to me and tell me that they don't do that practice right now. So, in other words, you saying, we'll shift it to this person. It's being shifted already. It's already being shifted. People that are not homeowners are still making other people pay for the water. So, that's the argument I'm making. That no matter what it is, the water's still being subsidized by the owners. The owners of these big buildings are subsidizing their own. They're charging the people for the water.
Okay. With that being said, I appreciate everyone who came out tonight. Thank you, city manager. We'll have this come up during a public hearing. And thank you to Ricky Velez in the back for covering this. Take care.